We call meeting to order. Let's stand and say the last thing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I, Chris, is here to attend our counseling. So we do have a forum. Let's look at our agenda. And I guess I would have one thing to approve, and that would be a resignation from Chad Gornlet that you see is on your agenda to appoint to planning -- for the planning commission. We haven't accepted his resignation, so we'll need to do that first, and then I will appoint. So I guess we could just combine that with number 12. And it's the same thing have to be done with the job description.
Not to my knowledge, no, it should be fine.
Okay. Okay, are there any other additions or corrections to be made?
I have a vote to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, we've been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Is there any item that you'd like to pull from the consent agenda that for further discussion? If not, I would move approval.
Seconded.
Moved consecutively. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Number four, and that starts the human field.
Thank you, Mayor Olson. Sarah Steele with Gilmore Bell, who serves on council for the city. We are here for a approval of a change on the Homestead Rural Rehabilitation project. Over the last two months, we've had many discussions and have determined that the total principal amount will not change, but we need to move your authorization from one series, Series A, down to series C of the bonds, so that Central National can purchase the construction loan portion, Series A, and the total principal amount of $2 million, and that's the maximum of what their approval was set forth. Fortunately, that came subsequent, that whole discussion came subsequent to your consideration of the original, and then sank in late May. This is one of two final steps that we have to be able to move forward, get approval from all of the investors, and move forward to close. The other is not reflected in these documents, but we might as well just consider it all at the same time. That is, there needs to be a change to the term set forth in the lease. The lease needs to be a very long-term lease. It was originally set up as 30 years, but it would be subject to being terminated as soon as the bonds were paid off, which would be anticipated to be no more than 15 years now. The council for certain tax credit investors has said, oh, we think that you should change that lease to 65 years, again with the understanding that the lease will terminate as soon as the bonds are paid off. So there is one change that we would like to have approved by this council and/or the mayor. It's not really something that you need to approve separately, but would like your consensus that the city will agree to change the originally approved lease term from 30 years to 65 years.
Okay, and where is that in the?
That is not reflected in your documents you have before you today.
At all.
No, it is not.
Okay, got three in the good mind again.
And this would be something that ordinarily I would think would be subject to your discretion, Mayor Olson.
That's right.
And so if you want to just leave it at that, that would be fine, but I did promise the participants that I would bring it up today.
All right, so you want that discussion before we even take on this?
That would be fine.
All right. Who wants to start that discussion?
Madam Mayor, I need to accuse myself of a discussion voting on this, and my vote not counted, and the negative order files give me my insurance through Central National.
Okay. Jerry, is there another opinion to start with?
Why the change from 30 to 65?
You know, it's the only requirement that their council has requested. It's a firm out of Omaha that, quite frankly, a competitor of Gilmore and Bell's, and I think they had to find a change, and so they felt that 65 years was what they needed in order to approve the documents for their tax credit investors to put money into this project. Again, there is an obligation that the lease will terminate as soon as the bonds are paid off. So no one anticipates that this lease will go on for 15 years. However, for purposes of documentation, this has been their request.
Do you have any further discussion?
It seems like an awfully long period of time.
Chris?
I just think it seems awful long, too.
Jerry? I think I'm in the same agreement that this would be too long of an agreement to come to for the sake of whoever is going to be involved with this whole thing, so I could be in favor of standing that.
What if we disagree with them, and they're not going to give us the money or not?
They will not give you, they will not put the money into the project, which may stop the whole project, unfortunately.
Just for clarification purposes, the years will only be dictated by the number of years in which the bond is in effect and enforced.
That is correct.
Once the bond is paid off, that number becomes a nonentity. It really has no effect because it's tied to the bond. So to me, it is simply a clerical distinction that lawyers make to justify their fees associated with review of documentation, and in effect, as long as we are guaranteed it only, the lease is only applicable for the same period as the bonds are in place, they can make it 1,000 years. It really does not affect the product.
What about the tax exemption down the road, if there's a way that could be put back on the tax rules? If some state in our state legislature, would that be effective at all later on?
To the best of my knowledge, the tax situation is really governed through the federal side of the Section 42 Housing Protocol. And so in that respect, I think it would have to fall to whatever guidelines those federal policies dictate to the handling of the taxes associated with this investment. What the, keep all the pieces separate. What the first question we're talking about is, will, is it acceptable to extend the terms of the lease, which is referenced in the lease agreement between Homestead Rural Rehabilitation and the City of Maryland, with the express understanding that that is not to exceed 65 years, but it will cease after the bonds are paid off in full, which is anticipated 15 years. So that's the first point here, and we can talk about other things, too, but if you start talking about taxes and down the future, and what Section 42 does and the IRB rules, let's try to keep the, I mean, I'll answer them, but--
Well, I would think they could be somewhat connected there, or not?
The bond will be paid off, anticipated to be paid off within 15 years, and that will be the terms of the lease that we are agreeing to with Homestead Rural Rehabilitation. So the question is, will you accept the 30-year being changed to 65-year? Now, what happens to the taxation basis is wholly dependent upon when that bond's paid off, and then under what section of tax status that those properties are still at. Two separate issues now.
But still connected a little bit, because you just said as long as they're--
As long, the longest that you may grant an abatement of this property under IRBs is 10 years.
10 years, okay. Then they would have to ask for them again.
But Tom Bishop intends to petition the Court of Tax Appeals for an order exempting this project under the fact that it's the Section 42 housing, for an unrelated basis upon which he is planning to petition the Court of Tax Appeals to have this prominently exempted from the tax rules. That cannot be done until after the project is up and completed, which is why he petitioned the city to grant this 10-year period under the issuance of the bonds. So the fact that the lease would be for longer term does not in any way impact the property tax abatement being granted by the city. That's a maximum of 10 years.
Okay, is there any way of getting that, of going to get it down to a lesser time or not?
Not to my knowledge. This has been their one request. So if we don't agree with that, it probably don't go through. Jeffrey, let's fund these coming in through the tax process.
Jerry, there's still things in your opinion. Okay. Are we ready for the question? Okay. I don't know that we need to go on that particular, do we need to settle that first then? Are you just telling us?
I'm, no, I'm not.
Would we have to put that number in here then in some way, amend this?
That will go into the lease document.
Okay.
So it will not in any way impact this ordinance shifting the dollars from Series A to Series C. It's a separate issue.
Okay, so that'll come at a later date?
It will be incorporated into the lease that the city will need to sign.
Okay.
And if this governing body rejects that concept, then I need to know sooner rather than later.
Well, then we do need a motion on the first motion, of course, the resolution, if we're going to do that, correct?
But you're, this would just be a motion approving the 65-year lease.
All right, so you do want that? Yeah, in order to get, put it into a delay's agreement?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so everybody wants to do that particular motion?
Move to be changed to the 65 years.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris is seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? I'll have to oppose that, and I don't know whether it's a good turn to have to take care of the tiebreaker.
Typically, they'll say if motion isn't passed, if it's tied, if there's nobody to break it tied, then it's a motion failed.
Okay, until we get that in writing, I have to reject it until I actually see it in a document, really do. Might change to 75 percent, you know, or something like this. I just don't like to say something, and then we might have a change again, so.
Okay, well, I will communicate with the parties that that has been rejected by this governing body, and I apologize, I did not want to change the documents again.
Right.
So I didn't bring them tonight for you to see it.
And this would be in that bond--
I'm council to you, and I would not change it--
And that's in that bond agreement that we have in the lease?
It's in the lease.
It's in the lease, but where's all the bond agreements that we were, I looked at at that time, and I was just saying.
Those have not changed.
Those have not changed?
No. But then the second item on this matter is the ordinance that amends the original ordinance, shifting dollars from the Series A bonds to the Series C bonds. And so that would probably, I would take on this one.
Okay. All right, we'll then move on to Resolution 130?
No.
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 There's still one.
We need action on ordinance 1357, as presented to council.
I got that back over here. Thank you. All right, did we have any motion for ordinance 1357, which is an amendment to our first ordinance? And would you want to state all of that is in Section 1 there? For clarification in your notes or in your minutes, clerk, how do you want to?
For the minutes, I have to copy this first paragraph.
First paragraph, okay. So anyone wanting to make that motion of the first paragraph of ordinance number 1357?
Are we having a discussion before, or?
Well, why don't we go ahead and move and second it, and then we'll have our discussion.
Okay, I move we accept ordinance 1357.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we'll have our discussion. If there's something you wanted to ask or discuss.
Yeah, I just was curious, this is going to give Homestead a much bigger stake. Originally, it had $5,000, it's now up to $1.9 million.
Yes, and what this $1,895,000 represents are the other sources of funding that will be coming in, several grants, as well as other sources of funding that represent that $1,895,000. Homestead, Homestead will actually receive those funds, then use those funds to buy bonds, bonds then paid for the project. It's really a pass-through, but we need to document it this way so that the entire project is financed with bond proceeds.
Does that keep us out of being responsible if there's a problem?
City is in no way responsible for any of this debt. This is purely an obligation between Homestead Rural Rehabilitation and the purchasers of the bonds, in this case, Central National Bank, purchasing $2,300,000 maximum of those bonds, and so it's in no way an obligation of the city, and you cannot be held liable for it.
Then Homestead already has the commitment for the money?
Yes.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carried three to one. All right, we then will need to do something on Resolution 1308.
Changing my path from line counsel in the Homestead project to serving as line counsel for the city on your street projects. This resolution that you have before you this evening will authorize the preparation of a preliminary official statement and the offering for sale of up to $965,000 of general obligation bonds in the city to pay for the costs of your street improvements. Those proceeds plus the CDBG grant funds that you will receive will total approximately $1,365,000, and that will be the, it's projected to be the total cost of your improvements, including the cost to issue these general obligation bonds. So at this point, all you are doing is authorizing the preparation of the offering documents, authorizing ransom financial to collect bids for the general obligation bonds. They will then come back to you and present those to you at your September 16 meeting, and we will be able to close shortly.
I think this is a little bit of clarification as to the increase, as to what I would want to know, is there, anyone else have anything that you want further explained on this one? So we had an increase of about $75,000 or so, $70,000, $70,000?
It's my understanding that the final engineers' bids came in at approximately $935,000.
Okay.
And so in addition to that, ransom financial total cost of issuance of approximately $30,000. They don't have to sell by total amount of bonds, they won't, in order to pay your costs. But in case, you need to allow room for an underwriters discount, which are the people that will be bidding to purchase your bonds, and also fees for ransom financial and your warrant, as well as some minor fees that you have with the state. So that was where the additional $30,000 came in, on top of the latest engineers estimate.
And also, when we originally talked about the street improvement project, Beathford and Williams had not been fully identified as one of the project streets, and it is included in this.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, so you decided on that, by the way, going with it, all right.
So the estimate is $100,000 more than what we had initially?
That's correct.
But with the fees?
It's actually more than that. Originally, I think we were looking at about 1.1 on the project. It's 1.3, the Beathford and Williams is $184, and we're anticipating is service that's said was approximately, you know, not to exceed $30,000 for bond costs for origination and fees and filings, so the combination of Beathford and Williams Street being added to the scope, as well as all the bond documentation costs associated with it, has really caused the price to go up.
Okay, now that--
So you made an estimate about how much per year we have to pay interest in person?
Yeah.
I don't know the interest rate.
That should be attached to your file. If you go on there--
Well, there's, there's no, at this point in time, I'm sorry, did you attach the projected projections?
I did, yeah.
I don't have this.
Okay, the very last sheet, you'll see those, and those are still just estimates. You'll see it says estimated, but that'll tell you your principal and your interest amounts on each year. And that's definitely a not-to-exceed word.
I mean, as I'm sure you're aware, interest rates are slowly creeping up, and so--
And this--
And lock in rates now, you're still in very good condition.
What, you said less of discount of, is that what you're talking about?
Actually, on the very back page, if you--
Very back?
Keep turning, very back, right there.
This is a 15-year bond?
Yes, yeah, we talked about the difference between 10, the 15, and 20. Quite frankly, I don't think it, I don't want to go out 20 years on streets. 10 years makes the principal and interest payment too high on an annual basis, so 15 seems to tie the value of the street, the time, the life associated with it, and also keeps our principal and interest payments within an anticipated budget. We anticipated $100,000 in the 2014 budget for this payment, so we're well within our budgeted amount that we anticipated for this bond. So the 10, 15, and 20-year discussion, the 15-year really was the sweet spot on several different angles.
And it's things that we might be talking about down the road, as far as maintenance, making some of these roads.
Quite honestly, what I'm looking at here is if we can make this budget, which we will be talking about later, the budget balances without any mill increase, and we're anticipating budgeting a higher payment than what this actually will require, so those additional dollars then may be something that we can look at down the road to do more maintenance. And I've talked to the engineer, he wasn't able to be here, but next meeting, we'll be talking about plans so that we do maintenance throughout the year, throughout the convenient years, so that this can be done through cash and not through a bond, large trunk issue like this.
That answers another question.
Worried about? Well, it's, it's a bond, because there's a place well over $4 million, almost $5 million in bonds.
In total debt?
Total debt.
Total debt, yes.
Are you talking about, is that going to put out what percent maybe could be in debt limit?
We will look at those numbers during the preparation of the preliminary official statement, definitely, and be able to present that information to you. I would think that they would have that available, maybe just to deliver to you electronically rather than team at the next meeting.
I dusted up the February 13, 2013 analysis that we did, and our bond to revenue ratios were still substantially below anything that the state considers a maximum for reportable. This will not push us over that frame. As far as just wanting to note that percentage is, I will be able to have that for you at the next meeting.
Further questions before we have a motion?
But it is, it'll probably be about being delivered to our borrowing rate.
This would be until we find, we do have one bond that comes off in 2014, and we have another one, I believe, in 2015. 2016, we have a couple come on, but yeah, at this point, I would say, until we see some of these other ones dropping off from a debt obligation, I think we've pretty much hit, but I think the council feels is a comfortable ratio at this point. It's not by any stretch of the imagination irresponsible from a state reportable standpoint, but understanding the conservative nature of our council and our constituents, I think we've, we'll be, we'll be done for a while.
Okay. We need a motion? And I definitely think that this is an important project, so maybe I'll just go ahead and make it myself, of approving the Resolution 1308 to, at least increasing the funds from eight, $895,000 to $965,000, is that enough?
Yes.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Good luck.
Thank you. We will, we will move forward on developing that offering document and present that to you, bring your approval, and Rosemary sends her regards. She would have been here today, but somebody left her, and I told her you would appreciate her staying.
Yes, I think so. Ms. Lang?
We have received the first invoice from Governmental Assistance Services for the administrative work on the street project. As part of the CDBG requirements, the city is responsible for paying for $2,000 of that for the environmental review that's required to be done. The other part is $1,056.25 that will come out of the grant funds. The request that you have is actually requesting $3,000 being drawn down from grant funds, and the reason for that is because that is the minimum amount that they can request from the state. So then, once we do receive these funds, that money will stay in the grant account until we have another invoice, and it'll just come out of that payment.
The extra.
Right.
Do we have environmental first picked out?
Well, this is just the environmental review that our grant administrators, they send out the letters to several different agencies that send back comments on that, so they don't actually have to do a full environmental review.
Probably have several different, probably never would finish with Eisenhower and Cedar, so we're just getting in here. Any further questions? Do we have a motion for approval?
I move we approve the request of CDBG funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Motion carried four to one, just one exception or extension.
Does it have to be, you have to always say raise your right hand or...
No.
...put them once in one?
Well, I want to have you raise your right toe one next time, maybe that'll, would that help? Or ear or some, put your ear. Try to remember that, that you like a little bit...
Now, the camera's got to be able to see that.
The camera's got to be the toe?
Yeah.
Or put it out there in front or something. All right, let's go on then to number seven.
In your packets, you also have a copy of an agreement with TMHC Services. This is just a follow-up from the last meeting, and I'm talking about the employee assistance program that you did agree to. This is the actual contract, and I figured since it's a contract, we better have counsel through the line.
Pretty straightforward, I think. Is there any questions?
It's been forwarded to her. She is on vacation until the end of this week.
I think two is more or less in favor of this last time, though did you get her input on it? Uh-oh.
I haven't talked...
We, she has not made a comment on this. I have forwarded to her, and she's on vacation. This is a pretty standard boilerplate contract. There's nothing that really identifies or puts the city under any obligation other than to pay them for the AEP program as approved by the last council meeting. I would assume if they have to have counsel or attorney look at this, that another two weeks won't kill it.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. We approve, approved resolution thirteen oh...
No, no, no. TMHC.
Yes, okay. Got it.
I understand. You've got my motion, though.
Yes, yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the approval of TMHC AEP's agreement, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Mr. Holder?
Good evening. To counsel permission, what I'm seeking is direction on a revision or a modification to the city ordinance that's been in effect since June fifth, two thousand. And in that resolution, the city provides the incentive of concrete to residential homeowners for the replacement of sidewalks in disrepair. The program has had a minimum of three thousand dollars earmarked each year for it. There have been four years where the amount was five thousand dollars. The maximum participation that I've been able to locate going through past records is three homeowners to the tune of nine hundred dollars. What I'd like to seek direction on, given the conditions in our downtown floor or the valley portion, the amount of sidewalks that are in some level of disrepair, I would like the council to consider modifying the resolution to include business owners in this incentive program. It will create an urgency, hopefully the incentive to get our downtown area revitalized. It will not be limited just to business owners in downtown. But the intent of the program is to throw the incentive out there. Then with that, from an economic stimulus, the business owner is responsible for the removal of existing and the preparation, which means additional work for our local contractors. That should help stimulate economy locally from the construction strip.
And so, Don, we'll have a big portion, we'll have one stretch of concrete to be putting in in front of Liberty Park with that, if we want to make it look good downtown for that, is that...
I, this, this program is not anticipated to be used for city repairs.
No, I know, but then we'd be encouraged to try to do that particular project, if you think if we...
But that would count through.
...let other people to do it.
That's easily possible to incentivize others to participate, but we won't be utilizing this program to pay for them.
But I just think that we don't have to be thinking about doing our own portions if there are others that are going to be thinking about doing their portions too, but then that's... We've already talked about that one, now with Mr. Lang, at Liberty Park.
Oh, well, the brick needs to be raised up. That's what we talked about. There's a hole there.
That's a no, but there's a...
Do you think that my use of this program...
Okay, you got questions?
Well, I can use of this program as due to the fact that people tend to go down.
That's a lot of it.
That's my belief, and I have some that publicize that I could find since it's...
Because that's some pretty grimy sidewalks if you walk around the city and all.
Yeah, but I also think that a lot of people don't have the funds to have somebody to be able to come in and do all the labor to tear it up, and they don't have the capability to do it themselves either. So I think that probably has somewhat of a, I mean, they probably participate, but they can't afford to pay somebody to come in and tear the sidewalk.
Frame it up and down the frame and so forth, I know that...
And they don't have the capability to do it themselves.
They don't.
So my question about, you know, if we utilize the downtown, we, I know we didn't get the downtown revitalization, but, you know, if that eventually comes into play, what's that going to affect these sidewalks downtown? If they would be done like we talked about earlier, if we'd ever get that. I mean, is there, you know what I'm saying, they go in and redo them, then we get that, and we put the brick deal in, I mean, then they're going to be tearing that up, I mean, if we get to that point. You understand what I'm saying? I'd like to keep it uniform down there.
Just so the full council is aware, the transportation enhancement grant for 2015 is open. I've spoken with Darren. We will be completing the grant application by December ninth. On September fifth, I'm going to Department of Transportation, basically it's strategic planning. And during that time, we hope to find out which direction the enhancement project for 2015 will take. Because the current, or the one that we had applied for and had to say visit the curb and were not successful. That one was the historical preservation of downtown areas. This next grant for enhancement may focus on historic replacement, may a preservation. There is a lot of discussion over making it accessible for IP walking trails, that type related to... So given the direction, and Darren will be watching the court from his office, as well as I, will try my best at the conference to determine which direction it will take. So today, to be able to speculate in 2015 if this would create a situation for a business owner to have to redo, and a lot of, I don't think anyone has an answer at this point in time. What we do have at this point in time is a community since two thousand and seven, all surveys taken on a community-wide basis, has expressed that our downtown environment is probably the most challenging thing we see as a community.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it, is it just downtown, or by tying it to the revitalization program, it's basically everything on each side of Main Street from east to west?
That is correct. I'm not excluding any merchants on any part of the downtown revitalization. And again, this would tie in directly to our revitalization efforts from a rebate, property rebate, which has been in effect since two thousand and two. And I'll just, I was originally going to present to the council approval, but it is in a local agreement, and I still will meet with the scoreboard on the twelfth to get the fourth partner in this revitalization effort.
Well, and we've talked about the streetscape, what it was, and they have a little bit of discussion as to whether we'd take, pay for that part of the sidewalks that were, had bricks or in front of their place, the use of that, that, well, grant for that?
This particular incentive will be at the discretion of the business owner. It will be reimbursement for the cost of materials up to a cap limit of three hundred dollars, which is approximately three yards of concrete for a hundred and ten linear feet of standard sidewalk replacement in our city.
Okay, so standard sidewalk downtown?
No.
Standard sidewalk for four foot?
Thirty-six inches in the ADA requirement.
And it'd have to be thicker?
Downtown actually does not. It could be four inches, which is a standard residential. Because it's not a load bearing situation, we have no driveway, driveway lanes or drive-throughs. That wouldn't be a bad...
Chris, did you get your question answered before?
Is there money in the budget?
Every year, we budget three thousand dollars. The question would be if we go to modify this, will there be any interest in increasing it to five thousand? Three thousand is in there right now. We do it every year.
But it's every year?
It's very, it's used very lightly. As Mr. Holder said, maximum must have been nine hundred dollars in one year. I think we've had two years where nobody's touched it at all.
In the last three years, there's only been one, or hundreds, hundreds because I won't pay out, because it'll be two hundred and seventy-something dollars.
And they did because I told them about it.
Motion?
What's on there?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
There's nothing to move here.
This was simply, this was simply a discussion. I needed to find out your direction. I'll prepare a proper...
Proper resolution?
Yes, for next time.
Could include that in the whole thing.
Correct.
I would be inclined, though, to remove the limits and open this up a little bit more, because there will be some places that will require more concrete.
Exactly.
And I don't care to limit that or stop somebody from actually making it improved. We may have to put in there on a first, first sort of basis or something a little bit different to cover that. Now, with what was brought up, which is almost a separate issue having to do with the grant application that we did not get, one of the comments was downtown, because a number of buildings are not handicap accessible. Something with this project, I would want something in a resolution to work with business owners if they want to apply it. If they don't have a handicap accessible entrance, that they would have to do that in conjunction with applying for these funds. That's why I want to take the limit off of there, because that was one of the biggest concerns. And I can't remember the percentage, but it's probably close to a half of the area that we were looking at, businesses are not handicap accessible. Was our application totally graded on that? No, but I think those who came out and looked did have that stuff in the back of their mind. So if we're going to do a sidewalk replacement project that targets, we were encouraged as downtown businesses, we ought to encourage them to also go ahead and fix their entrances. So that's why I'm okay with removing the limit and not even just calling it sidewalk, but almost business entrance enhancement with that. So open, don't limit it too much, I would say. The council can go next time, but I would be more encouraged to seek some of that direction in a resolution to encourage that. I think that will only help with our next round of applications. And maybe if we need to do something more directed to that floor block area, we may need to do that in addition to this, but there's my two cents.
Your two cents, that would get rid of the three hundred?
Yeah, I would take, I would take the limit off of there. The limit of three hundred dollars and the limit of one hundred linear feet of sidewalk. This one doesn't have the three hundred dollars.
No, the original defined in blank. At the time, concrete was sold for sixty-five dollars a yard. It's now ninety dollars a yard. So that's why we built it here, apparently to put a dollar cap. Realistically, there are a number of businesses that could in one claim wipe out five thousand dollars worth of concrete. So in, in all fairness to the council, are you willing to put out a benefit that one individual would be able to utilize?
Well, I think that goes to the same argument that some of the council members brought up. If nobody is using it, or even if somebody at their own home can't come up with the forming, the removal, what good is the program? If we get one done, we get it done. If we don't have enough to help somebody, that will probably never get done downtown. So you probably just brought up an issue that, like I was alluding to, is maybe we do need to be more committed to the project as far as the funding. If one of our biggest areas is not going to apply because they can't get, because we're up at a dollar limit on our side, is that enough incentive for them to do the entire project? So if it takes one a year for twenty years at the three thousand dollar budget, at least that, well, that's sad, but at least three thousand dollars a year gets done. Maybe we need to put some more. More budget in there to actually do it. That's why I'd rather get a project done, one that's the biggest, the worst, what have you, and not do. But I see where the others are coming from of limiting. But if you, I can think of one corner business, that they won't be able to do the project without the support. And they still may not, even if they have to do all of the forming and that themselves. So I'm okay to lifting that. And have you presented, if you put a limit in there for the next meeting, I'll, I would probably say I would make a motion to remove it.
And then we brought up the requirements of the American Disability Act.
Right.
Included in that, municipality has responsibility for intersections, making ADA accessible ramps as mandated. So the city has, in the case of the downtown situation, the ADA requirements from zoning and planning, and I speak, I can only speak nationally at this point, I have not reviewed our local. But on a national basis, the zoning requirements, that becomes a responsibility of the city to create the access ramp. And business owners within the continuous block are not required to create curb space, only access to the building. So do you want this written in a manner that encourages access to the building? And foregoing any reference to the city's responsibility of...
Well, our...
I'm just going to, I'll tell you, the program will be leveraging the two thousand. I'll present a resolution that we will absolve that one and go with a new resolution. And I'll have that prepared for the next council.
Okay, because I think maybe you could have some information from some of the business owners that do have that, will have an access to be, you know, see what they think about it, if they have to do that.
With your permission, I'll, I'll make sure that I have all of the local voting laws communicated and the people prior to that meeting.
Okay, thank you, Colonel. I guess you have another one to take care of.
Yes, I do. The next one, I will be asking for a vote to support this project. A number of years ago, in a joint conversation or effort between the City of Marion and the Marion Economic Development Incorporated, the decision was made to move forward with a welcome to Marion sign that would be at the corner of the... And we now have all of the necessary permits, state building authorizations, and we're to the point to get started with construction. The proposal was that the city would provide the concrete stem wall. The proposal is using city labor, which would come basically out of my economic development budget to cover the expense of the labor to build this. The only true cash outlay for the city would be approximately $1,650 in concrete and reinforcement materials. And then MEDI will be responsible for having the facing, which we have materials already donated from USC 408 for this project. They'll be responsible for the labor of installing that on one side of the sign and then having the steel that kept letters, or yeah, letters installed by the sign. So I would ask, with the council's permission, do I have to move ahead with the project with $1,650 direct expense for the city and the $2,000 in labor basically to be charged to my economic development?
Vote for me, the labor and the $1,650, is that what you were saying? So that this sign, the actual cement and the 16 concrete is $1,650 plus the labor you said was coming out of your budget or just the $1,650?
You said the $2,000 for the labor is coming out of the budget?
The $2,000 for the labor comes out of mine. The other $1,650 is out of one of the capital expenditure lines for the city.
And that's because, and that's the reason that you have to have a citation of budgeting authority by us? You've got that in your.
Technically, it's within, all of this falls within budget authority that already exists and is available right now. I'm just asking for the approval of full council to move forward with this project that's been in the works. Bottom line, as part of your administrative team, it's my responsibility to get this figured out and paid for. I'm reassuring you, it's all in the budget, but I do not want to move forward without full council approval.
So they had always that thought about using solar for this lighting on that corner?
The state requires that the sign be replaced, instructed, they'll send out for the inspection, and then we request the lighting, and by that time, we designate which type of lighting system.
Okay, so that could be, that it could be electrically rather than just solar?
It could be either way. And if it is, we have power in the industrial park, literally the next sign down that advertises our industrial park, that we would be able to tie it.
All right, so that would be a different kind of, different kind of lighting, and then that, you would have that different kind of cost to, which, or that particular, the lights that would shine up or changing it from the solar to the other kind of electricity?
Or if you would go from solar, which is an LED light, tends to be a little brighter, to an incandescent if we go with a hardware light system.
There currently is a street light there.
Oh, okay.
It's, we may not even need it when it's done. We had to put it in the application to make sure we get approval for this.
Okay.
The east side would definitely be, yeah, the east side would definitely be illuminated by the existing light.
Okay, do we have a motion or an action would be taken on this particular item?
I would move with your approval.
Okay, it's been moved by, by Chris and stated by Todd to move forward with the sign construction expenses and, yeah, and the amount of?
An amount of $3,000.
Okay, so that being said, that's reasonable, that's about the different kinds of lighting might have been a little bit different there.
All, all you are considering is the city's costs associated with installing the sign.
Right.
So that's the motion that you need to be concerned about here. The $1,650, actually, materials will probably, we're anticipating will come out of the signage budget that we have through the ECODEV. The actual labor costs will be absorbed through the departments as part of their normal operations. So the, the real issue is will you allow the city crews to do the labor to install the forming to build this stem wall? And will you approve the usage of ECODEV funds for purchasing the concrete that will be used in building the sign?
And that's what you?
That's the point.
As I understood Chris's motion, in my second.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. opposed? I guess you can go to work and see what you're, you can come up with the timeline and everything as to what we didn't expect.
As soon as I can pour concrete, it will flow.
Well, we thought, we thought we'd put you out there with a shovel tonight to start.
You figure that one out, we'll get Mayan Seater.
I don't think that those cemetery, it's slower than that.
You don't think that, that coming on?
Well, you can donate them, and we'll see.
That's what I'm trying to say, that.
What you see out there.
It has to be better.
As a job.
Well, we took that, so. Hey, I guess we have another thing to be considered, so you're up, still up.
Okay. And this again is, I'm seeking direction from the council on how to proceed with this item. The state of Kansas has designated Marion County as one of the rural opportunities zones. The documentation that you have in your packet explains the specific benefit. One of those benefits is tuition reimbursement for college students coming back to our community. And the program, whenever rolled out, the county matched with the state, or up to $3,000, $1,500 by the county, $1,500 by the state for each applicant, $1,500. The county commissioners approached me and asked if I would present to the city council, would we be willing as a city to sponsor two more of these reimbursement programs? And the city of Hillsboro is being approached with the same request. The reason being is we, as a county, we already have 23 applicants that are professionals that attended school that are wanting to come back, and they're seeking the assistance to relocate to our community.
Your county or?
Currently, the way the program works, it is just to the county from any governmental body doing that. Now, as an individual employer, if you match the $1,500 and the state that matches, you can designate the person that will receive that money. But that has to be not through any governmental body, it has to be through private industry.
And, and would that stay here in Marion then, or would that be?
There's not a guarantee that it stays in our city.
No, if this is for the education repayment, it's going to go to either the student loan land or the university where that individual graduating from.
But you say there are some that are currently waiting for maybe this type of thing to happen, or no?
County has 23 applicants pending on the way in this right now.
And first thing I think we'd have to say, this would not be in the budget, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry. If applicant is accepted, council of years, it is for the graduate. So it's $7,500, that's correct.
And my next, my question was that, the budgeting of it?
There is no line out of this currently.
Currently.
Council determines.
Is, in your opinion, is this a worthwhile project?
Look, John, do you? I'll answer that. You wouldn't have recommended it, you didn't think it was a worthwhile project.
$1,500, you know, is a hultry amount, but then I guess it would be if you were wanting that, and had it, that would be $3,000, so it could get.
It is a $3,000 a year to someone graduating with a degree that's wanting to return to our county. So the reason I'm presenting, in my opinion, it helps bring back the brightest and the most talented that in many cases over the past years have gone off, gone to university and then decided, you know, the bigger city's better.
So is this going to, is this something that all of these people that are interested in this has access to know about it really well?
Yes, the universities have been touting this program since Governor Brownback announced it two years ago, two and a half years ago.
So the thing is, the, the city could be putting it, we could be funding it, but like you said, it could go to Lincolnville, something like that.
Yes.
But we could limit that, though.
Right.
As a governmental body, that, that's really a concern.
Only in the county.
Only in the county.
Yeah. These are people, professors from colleges, which means they're probably professionals and they have hopefully a lot of salaries. Average. That is the target. Currently, our average salary in the county is $20,200. Most of the individuals that are participating in this are carrying a starting salary of $40,000. And the vast majority, yes, are professionals.
I'm surprised the number is that high, as one of the criteria is that they have to be out of the state of Kansas for five, 12 years. I'm surprised that we have that 23 that call.
It's your snake representative.
Well, it sounded good when he talked about it, but then I, I didn't know whether the amount was going to be enough to really get him interested to come into a rural area like this, but you're saying 23 really hard, huh?
Yes, the county has 23 on the way now, just right now.
Well, if we could afford it, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed to do it because I know they have, they're debts too that they need to be paying off in order to come back, so. You want to give us time to chew on it a little longer?
Absolutely. I'll leave it with when I receive direction.
I don't think we should chew too long, but then I think we need, I think it just needs to be rolled over just a little bit, thorough minded.
Absolutely, I appreciate your time too, the three topics this evening, I wanted to just get out so you had time to.
Well, we, we appreciate you have been, already been spending time with us in our local community because this is where we want to start and keep from here.
Thank you, hon.
Uh-huh, so we'll look forward to you being back and urging us more on this, this subject. Okay, let's go on to number 11.
As council and press received packet, we did get notification Marty Fredrickson has decided to remove himself from the zoning administrative duties. You have a copy of that in your file. And this, this agenda item is specifically modifying or amending the utility supervisor position to remove the zoning administrator portion of the job duties under the essential functions.
Is he still willing, though, to take the building inspection?
Public safety officer and building inspector has not been changed.
I'm going to approve the revised job description.
I have a question first. Sorry. This building inspector, that's a paid job, right? That's extreme.
The building inspector duties when assigned to Marty at the time that they were assigned did include a pay adjustment, yes.
So my, my question is, if somebody else would get appointed to this mayor, would they want the building inspector for the job? I mean, that's the only thing I'm thinking about.
Me too.
I mean, I don't know how much he gets paid, but it might be a little sandy for somebody saying he retires, oh man, if I have to serve on that, I want to be on the building inspector's too.
Well, I would think then, at that time, we could address that if the mayor wishes to appoint somebody to do that, we can adjust this later. At this, at this time, we're only looking at him not being the zoning administrator, unless you want to make a motion to drop his pay and reduce and take those other jobs away from Marty.
Well, I just think it needs to be brought out, I think.
I'm going to approve the utility supervisor revised job description as presented. I second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? My further instruction would be that I would like to have a work session in which you would, you know, you would, we, you and I were talking about this, it is an appointed position for this particular one. I want to know why the building inspector didn't get included with that particular job in the first place? Why, why was this not included as a zoning administrator, which, which did include being a building inspector as well?
No, zoning administrator is completely different set of duties as a building inspector. The zoning administrator and building inspector are two complete different responsibilities.
But they work together?
They can work together, but they, the duties themselves are not intertwined.
I'm not getting your point, Mayor, what you're trying to.
You're not getting the point? Well, I would like to, I would like to have a little bit more time to talk with him. I've already talked to him about whoever is considered, I'm going to be continually going to tell him I would want him to continue what the planning board has done in this couple, the last couple of years to make sure that the codes are looked at and that the plans are looked at and see that if they go to the planning committee or planning and zoning, they should be going there. And that's what I'm going to be looking for that particular person to make sure that they are doing and not taking the responsibility upon themselves with the decisions that need to pass through both he and the planning and zoning. So to me, that building inspector is going to come after the, the, does he go out after the building permit is being made?
Yeah, there's usually two inspections, at least two inspections on any building, but the zoning administrator doesn't have any input whatsoever on approved permits that need to be inspected by the building inspector.
Okay, would that bu, building inspector go out and do the measuring and setbacks and so forth proposed?
As part of the permit application, the, when we approve a permit, those are double-checked and verified as part of the permitting process.
All right, so that building inspector would do that part of it, correct?
That is correct.
And then the zoning administrator would come in and say, this is the, then should, by my, by my decision, then I would say that this needs to go to the planning commission or then I will take responsibility for the building permit?
The zoning administrator's responsibilities fall under the zoning and regulations that we have on our plan and zone, zoning regulations, our subdivision regulations. It is not part of a standalone, just building permit within the city limits. If you have a situation where somebody wants to build or applies for a building permit that may not meet the criteria that a building inspector would say falls within an applicable permissible area, then that is then given to an administrator of the zoning so they can either clarify the position or recommend it go before the zoning or planning and zoning commission.
Okay. All right, so you think that those two would be working together in that particular concept? The building inspector would take all the plans and say, go up and, and see whether the setbacks are correct and, and they, then he would then turn it over to your administrator to make the decisions.
If it appears...
On this permission, could I address this situation? I've read the planning and the zoning, um, as part of my position, trying to figure out downtown and how to move forward. The relationship that normally exists, and our community has been different because the positions were all combined. Our local statutes state that an applicant comes in and applies for a building permit for a project. It is to go to the building administrator to be reviewed against current zoning laws and regulations on apply. Has to be completed within three days, that piece of. Then the permit, if there's any variance, if it can't be aligned with our existing statutes, it then has to be delayed by the zoning administrator until the next meeting of the full planning and zoning commission. At that time, they review it and make their recommendation to either issue a permit or request a revision in planned project.
So, what you're saying then, they, the building inspector would come after that?
The building inspector goes after the permit has been authorized by the administrator and/or the zoning committee. Then, there is, the building inspector goes to the site and what we have really, our zoning laws currently, the inspections are for the safety and well-being are the only things that were really correct, okay? Structural integrity and electric.
Okay, gotcha.
All of the rest of it really isn't required, an onsite visit by an inspector. So, the two work together, but it is designed to be a checks and balance system where an administrator cannot approve a project and allow subpar work to be performed. So, by having the two positions separated, at the end of the day, the citizens of our city will end up with a more confidence or peace of mind that their project is being managed.
Okay, you explained that well then, Ethan.
And thank you for the permission to address.
All right, that answers my question then.
Roger, then through the, because I'm not guessed up on planning commission and zoning, who, is it the mayor that points the zoning administrator, the public safety officer, the building inspector?
No. Okay, is that...
To the best of our knowledge, the, the ordinance, the charter ordinance of our city states that the zoning administrator position is an appointed position. Has it been done in the last few years? No. So, I don't know if we've definitively...
Do you have, do you have that ordinance that I can see?
No, we do not have that definiti, I, I want to stress that my memo specifically said, I would request that the council allow me to have until next council meeting to suggest to the mayor any appropriate actions and/or appointments. This agenda item is presented only to remove the zoning administrator duties from the essential functions of the job description.
Okay.
You're, you're, again, getting too many pieces ahead that you're making it look as if we're not prepared, but this was not designed to be solving the problem. This is just correcting the job description to reflect the requested deletion of that responsibility by our utility supervisor.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking for.
Can I call for a question?
All right. It's been moved and seconded to remove the acts as a zoning administrator from this particular utility supervisor job description. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Thank you, Roger. Okay. Now, to number twelve, I did, I did have a, a resignation that I need to bring to your attention first, and it was for Chad Gormley, and he has told me that he was going to be leaving, but I asked it to be put into writing, and he says, I would like to resign my position as planning and zoning commission effective July the first, two thousand thirteen, due to moving to Iowa, Kansas. And then he says a little personal things there, but do I have a motion to approve his resignation?
So...
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept his resignation. All in favor, so happy.
Question, and it...
Okay.
Do we have to approve, is it council that has to approve the resignation?
We usually do, but then...
It's not anywhere required, but it has been a common practice.
All of us in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Most, most of the time, we don't like to do that. Oh, I hear, exactly right.
No, I, it's whether or not we need official action for it.
All right, let's go on then to appointment. I do have someone that has said that he would serve, and I think he would do a good job, and that is Greg Carlson, who now is the owner of the Greg Carlson Grocery Store, so I think that all of you are well aware that he has taken a good interest in our city and done a lot for the planning of our city. So, with that being said, I would move to approve that appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. Any further discussion? All of us in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Okay. Let's take a three-minute recess before we go on to the discussion of the budget. And do I have anything that I want to design for, Sarah's already taken off, correct?
I do have the documents. You can sign them for us.
Okay, she's already... All right, we'll get back to our two thousand fourteen budget, and I think we're going to be able to work it clear through until we get it placed where we can prove it for publication tonight. Is that what you're wanting?
I'll second the motion to have a three-minute recess.
Okay, all of us in favors, the eye? Opposed? I think we're ready to...
At the last council meeting, a preliminary budget was proposed to the council under direction by the council, and we were told to go back and make the adjustments to the budget that were necessary, so the mill increase was unnecessary. Those changes have been made. Even though it is page fourteen of a standard application to the state, I request it to be page one, so the very first page is, you will notice on the columns, the mill levy remained six, three point seven oh six. The change was accomplished by downgrading the anticipated purchase of BACCO from being a brand-new unit to a used unit, and those costs then were pulled through and was allowed to basically transfer enough to our general fund so that a mill increase was unnecessary. So, based upon the actions of the, the request of the council, administration has made those changes and presents it to the council tonight for approval.
Has this been published yet?
No.
I'd say we've been approved for this hearing, but this two...
I, I had a question, why we use the office ten?
That was just a number I put in while you were waiting.
Okay, we're not going to be done, so...
No, no, that will be changed once you decide.
That's the only thing that you changed, you just pulled out those numbers out for the equipment and made them lower, is that correct?
That, that is what happened, the only changes, there were several, to make it work.
Oh.
It's more like a transfer to the utility fund than the general fund.
Correct. We reduced the transfer from the utility fund to the equipment reserve and increased the utility to the general fund. We also in the equipment reserve changed some of the numbers as far as the cost for the BACCO and the dump truck.
Those new, those new numbers are not in the budget.
Yes, they're already there. They're on page eleven.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there's no line for building up a reserve for street repair or improvements.
The, at this point, the only way that we can continue, there's a special highway fund.
I think we talked about having a million reserves to maybe pay cash for.
Right now, we have, in the special highway, we have street repair and maintenance for eight thousand five hundred. Basically, that's just the extra money that's in that fund to go ahead and budget down to zero, so that can be used as a slow buildup of the reserve.
Well, the other thing that Doug you brought up earlier is the, some of these bond payments coming off in fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
One comes off in fourteen.
The opportunity then to not increase the mill levy, but then to be taken what was designated or budgeted for those bond payments that could be set aside for street improvements other than capital improvements without...
A percentage of those, yes. Well, if a bond falls off at a hundred thousand a year, I'm not anticipating putting that full amount back into a reserve for fixing those streets.
What, what?
Yeah, so, yeah, there will be some cash. I think the point being is that what we're showing here is a budgeted maximum not to exceed for two thousand fourteen. And of that, we do have street and alley, curbs, concrete, we have our street program that always has the investment in there, that following that, I feel as though there is within operational funds, our ability to better get a handle on the improvements that need to be done. I've spoken to Darren Newfeld, in a perfect world, he's anticipating, if we can make a ten-year commitment of twenty thousand dollars a year, we get every curb and gutter, every major curb and gutter problem fixed in the city. Quite honestly, I was encouraged, it was only twenty thousand a year for ten years to get all curb and gutter, but that's not street service. So, you're talking about a project that is fairly extensive, I would like to see for two thousand fourteen, my greatest concern is of the blacktop and the asphalt that we already have down that's three to five years of age, getting a slurry coat on that, and I do have costs associated, and I do feel so there's, there's room in the budget for two thousand fourteen under our normal street and alley budget process to be able to get those sealed. So, it doesn't require a special fund set aside to do that. I do appreciate, however, the, the issue of saying we need to start working on our cash reserves, and we need to start funding these projects so we don't have to bond them. I will remind you that that is the street and alley, which is on the general fund side, which typically comes from add-on taxes because there's not a revenue on the streets to offset. So, it, it will be difficult for us to be able to build up a, a reserve without either raiding more of our revenues from our utilities or doing a mill increase. I'm understanding what the council wants to do. Obviously, we don't want to increase the mills, that's what's been presented. In future budgeting years, it is strongly recommended that we set aside additional monies on top of our operating expenditures for purposes of doing this. We're going to have to raid the utilities or we're going to have to do something with our mill levy.
Doug, I don't remember if you recall that we had talked about appropriations for whatever, did you just take the, what, did you appropriate for?
It's been what we've appropriated before, yes, the...
Appropriations is...
Rec was actually a thousand dollars less, only because we had, because of the expenditure associated with the ballpark.
And then, okay, then we, we hadn't done the appropriation for the housing, so that wasn't in here. Anybody else have any questions?
Well, we don't have anything for Dyke inspection for two thousand fourteen?
Well, the Dyke inspection portion was actually financed through bonding on the refinance that covered the full cost of the Wilson and Company accreditation that they were doing. Once we get accredited, then all the only expenditures we will have is the flood control, which is a normal line item associated with maintaining any problems associated with the levy. So, there is no inspections per se of the levy that we pay for outside of the Wilson and Company charges associated with accreditation that was already paid for under the refinanced portion of that last bond.
So, what is this flood control not just leave? Is that only for spraying?
That's, that's just maintaining the property. That's keeping the trees down, the vegetation down.
Spraying.
Spraying, which is the spray rig we talked about two weeks ago.
And five thousand more?
Mowing expenses. I don't know what each of the line items, riprap is a continuing expense. And our last flood event that we had here, there's probably some riprap, we'll need to re, re-stabilize some areas of the levy.
There's also about seventeen thousand that's principal and interest payments to pay for the bond, for the levy certification that's in that fund.
Then, under Roger's economic development, is that his money that he needs to pay for things? Sixty-six hundred and more dollars?
A large portion of the economic development budget does pay all of the real estate taxes associated with the property that is held at the industrial park and the business park.
Well, that's kind of bad to attach a Roger name to that. I mean, I told you, I inherited some things to clean up, but that's what I'm working on.
You never had a problem when mining was a touch.
Maybe he would stick around and keep using it. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion or action to be taken now to get this ready for publication?
And to, if we're going to approve the budget, we're not setting a date yet, so I want to make sure that I'm just approving the budget, not what it says on top.
I would be very careful about making any kind of motion approving the budget. I would say right now, it could be more of a council consensus to hold the budget workshop at the next council meeting.
And publish.
And publish.
Okay.
That it doesn't require any action this time.
Publicize it?
Yeah, we, we need to publish it, we need to set the public hearing date, and after that, then the council will...
And we're in time for it again.
We have to have ten days between the publication, so if we went, if we sent it in to be published on Wednesday, we would be okay to do this on the nineteenth?
Correct, so what we would do is we'd set the public, we would authorize publication of the budget, setting the public hearing to be at four thirty on...
The nineteenth.
Okay, the nineteenth, yeah, that's a Monday, the next one's a Tuesday. The nineteenth to occur before the regularly scheduled meeting.
That's my motion.
That's a good way to make a meeting day.
No, I just want to see if I can be back.
Are you satisfied, or would you like to hear it goes down officially?
I know she'll have it down.
And I'll second it.
I'll be back, unless I'm being...
Okay, who wants to do it? Oh, we've done it, okay, well, excuse me, I didn't hear you, Jerry. Is that, would you repeat that for me?
I would second it.
Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Would you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. And now that would be all you need. Department heads. Any questions for Marty or Christian?
I would like to add, this is just on my side, but I think the, all the crews have done a really excellent job getting the town cleaned up, a special kudos goes to our electric department. A special kudos goes to our electric department. They were out at 11 o'clock on Friday evening. They worked till 6:00 a.m. on Saturday, went back for safety purposes, got a couple hours of sleep, went back out at 11 o'clock on Saturday morning and worked until 4 o'clock. And everybody got restored. Everything was good. We also appreciate the patience that the public has provided. Everybody seemed to know that it was a storm and we were working on getting power restored. And it reels for, the raining on the Friday night went very well. And I appreciate all parties involved.
I'd like to thank all of the residents that got out there and looked at me like they were hauling lamps, like everything, sadly. So thanks for that. Good help in cleaning up the streets in front of their place. If our people had to do it, why, it all did go well. Okay, anything else? And then let's move on to the chief of police who's on here. Any questions for him? I have one. I had a concern for RVs on the parking in the streets. What is our ordinance for the RVs towards parking in the streets? Three days, two nights, and then they have to move, or what?
That's why one will need to look at tagging up if it becomes a problem. Typically, if they are licensed and tagged and they're registered vehicles and they are parked on the side of the street and they happen to be there for three days or four days while they're visiting families beside the street, it's really difficult to try to hit them for anything. If we feel as though the intent is to park in front of maybe an empty lot, utilize their own shower and sewage capabilities, maybe even run the extension cord with or without permission, that's when we have to have enforcement issues. So it's a practical application of our ordinances that we have. And quite frankly, on the ordinance, we don't have the time limit as some people think we have. We don't have a 48 hours. We address truck and trailer parking, but we don't do RVs.
RVs, that's what I thought.
So, but I mean, if it looks like there's an intent to somehow defraud or create a semi-permanent residence on the street, obviously we'll have some enforcement issues.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, I guess then we move on. Do you have anything further that you want to add with us?
I have some questions for Roger. Look the likelihood now that the Homestead project will not be before it based on the previous vote. Now, have you done any work to, I know at one of the previous meetings there was a discussion on the economic impact of that project to the city. Could you comment on what potentially could be lost to the city based on our current actions, previous actions tonight?
When I did the projections, looking at it from a commerce impact for our city, I used the term of 30 years for my analysis that I did, which was how the original bond offering was written. And I have a copy of that on the spare of each. Take it through. But I guess with your permission, I want to address the 65 versus the 30 on a term from an economic impact and the reality for the investor community. The move to take it to 65 versus 30, these particular bonds are offered to purchasers as a way of sheltering income tax, both from a state and a federal tax law. So as a personal investor, I'm always looking for municipality offerings of this nature. And by putting 65 years versus 30 years on it, honestly, as an investor, I know that I won't be able to lock for 65 years because no company, no community will put out a bond that they're going to float that long. So I know it's going to be called in advance. So as far as what was presented this evening, 65 versus 30 from a personal liability standpoint or from the city's liability standpoint, it has no impact on the overall equation. With your permission, I would like to share with you just really how important this particular project in our community is, from my opinion, as we move ahead. The project consists of adding 20 new residences and rehabilitating 20 existing. The 20 existing, right now occupancy has dropped to 25%. They have 15 unoccupied units and 10 of which have been deemed uninhabitable because the conditions have fallen that far in this project. So from that, the actions will result in up to 35 additional households in our community in the next two to three years as this project's completed. The immediate financial impacts for our community, there's $313,500 in income and revenues that will be generated for our local tradesmen doing the rehab on the September complex. Additionally, the construction of the duplexes, which we have nine more units of the 18 to do, it is a connection between 408 and the trades. So we're going to have local contractors bidding on potential of $1,415,000 in visits. Along with that, the agreements and how this particular company works it, our students from the high school will be able to work shoulder to shoulder with actual contractors and gain that educational piece that doesn't exist in the lab-only environment. So initially, that's going to drop in. The other impact, there's currently a waiting list for the duplexes that we have on the east side of town. We have eight widows or widowers in our community that have signed up waiting to get into this type of living. So with that, the impact in our market will be between $1,125,000 and $1,825,000 based on the current value of their homes that they'll be placing on the market. The majority of the homes are in the sweet spot in our market, which is 100,000 to 165,000. That's the prime spot. That's when the house is on the market that leaves. So if we do get the duplexes, then we have at least eight of them that are going to be filled, really, upon completion. Then we open up the commerce of trade, and that will also have a residual effect. The million eight figure includes, we have a sector in our community, or I've spoken to her about it, they're in homes that are valued at 50,000 to 60,000 right now. They become affluent enough, they want to bump up to the next, you know, go from the two-bedroom starter to the three-bedroom or four-bedroom. So not only will our real estate market have that initial with the higher value, it'll have a backfill to drive into our community. Just looking at this project from the residuals that come from it, annually, we'll have $32,375 added to the revenue stream for our city-owned utilities. That's $925 on average for these 35 households that'll be coming back online. The income that's generated from getting 35 more residents established in our community is $707,000 annually. And then, from the tourism side of it, revenues associated with this type of living arrangements that are being built would estimate another $12,000 in annual revenues to our community through hospitality that we have in our town as well as logic. The intangibles of this project, and I've really got to bring those forward, the impact that this makes, you know, our sports center draws a ton of outside visitors to our town. They're coming down high zip out. Their first impression as this project moves forward is that we're an innovative, growing community. They're going to see brand-new housing. And then where do they go? They go down to the end of the street to turn. What do they see? They see a great country club. So I think it's critical to us, and then September, when you turn the corner and you're headed in, yes, we got an opportunity on the south side of the road, but the north side of the road, this will address that. The project, you know, one thing I've learned about going from private business to public, definitely deal with all personalities. So a lot of this, I got to take personality out of it. This project is being managed by a 501(c)(3) corporation that has administered eight different projects of this nature in our state. They're all successful to this point. In addition to that, this corporation has assisted 896 homeowners, first-time homeowner buyers in 78 of the 105 counties in our state. The company's been in business since 1998. I pulled their Better Business Bureau rating. They carry an A-plus rating for the entire entity in all cities that they operate, including their brand-new one that came online in low bank. So, and I pulled up to find out how many complaints they had filed with the Better Business Bureau and/or the Attorney General's Office. They have none in the last three years. So regardless of it, we're bringing it, yes, they're from another town, but they have a very proven track record in this type of specialized housing and refurberation of existing facilities. And the third thing, intangible impact, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this with the full console. We granted the construction, the planning, zoning variances to move it forward. Reversal on the project will be detrimental to the credibility of our city and its desire to grow. So it is of a concern to me. I really would like to see this. The overall impact as it comes, and again, I based this on 30 years when I did it. I can change it to 65 as we're going and give you the advertised numbers. But as a city, we have $0 of liability tied to this project. Everything falls on the investor group and a local bank. When I received word that the change in the steel was going to have to come down, I reviewed the documents trying to figure out why were we moving the money the way it was going? And basically, it comes down to, we're putting more on the direct operations. They're responsible for their actions. They're not going in with just $5,000 out-of-pocket investment. They're putting, bottom line, for a local bank, they're taking over $2 million of direct risk out of our community and putting it on their ledger as we move forward. I did all of the tax projections to see where we're at. The evaded taxes for the 30-year period, I'm speaking purely stick dollars, okay? And again, on all my calculations, I'm keeping it simple. I'm not using actuation tables. I'm not using depreciation. I'm just taking straight-line values so we can keep it all in perspective here. But it's $416,992.64 is the amount of taxes that will be evaded on this project for the 30-year term. We'll collect, over the increased revenue, $81,096 in sales tax in our community. So the impact there, we've really dropped it down to 326, 327 on evaded taxes. The value of the duplex project is $2,090,000. It's what I projected out based on their cost per square foot to build and investments made there. So when everything's said and done, over the course of the next 30 years, this project stands to stimulate our community commerce by $26 million over the course of that time. So coming down to, you know, my recommendations is that we support the project through the bonding offer. Again, we're not at risk. It helps our local community with over $26 million in commerce, creates local employment opportunities as we're coming out of the gate. And we manage by a company that has, I just, I can't find any other property management company that has a better performance rating since 1998, actually, even if you look at the last four years. And there's been a number of investment companies tried to get in to the affordable asset market. Their complaints are off the chart. So I felt very comfortable about this. At the end of the day, it comes down to lack of participation in this project. What it amounts to, we're going to get $127,346.40 from the existing properties up there. We'll have no appreciation in value. We're facing, I mean, the one half of that went to a total valuation of 305 from the year before of 340,000. The other property dropped 40,000 in assessed value. So we're dealing with the September project that has reached its usable lifespan. And if it doesn't get an investment group, we could have even larger at-risk. But I wanted everybody to know these, based on my predictions, again, simple, straight-line projections, this really is an important project in our community overall.
Well, I'm not saying that it's not very important, but I just didn't have that others. Years there just kind of bothered me that it didn't have in black and white for me, you know, that part of it.
May I ask you, Ms. Steele, come back with it in?
Oh, yes. I would be very happy if she could bring me back the, you know, the total amount with that particular, that amount in there. Yes, I would be in favor. The whole thing I've been in for, but I don't like to have something thrown into us at the last minute here that we have to consider. And 65 years did sound like an omelet, or what was it, a difference in 30 years there?
Yeah, actually, it's a difference of 35 years that we're floating out there. But what that is, is it's a marketing tool to get a bond to sell before somebody else's bond on the open market.
Maybe I just don't know enough about that part of it.
Most people are familiar with the Wolf Creek Power Plant in Arlington, Kansas. They sponsored the same type of bond offering. And that particular one at one point had a 75-year offering on it.
It did.
Okay? And it ended up being issued at only 25. But from a marketing standpoint, they understood the general public was going to be nervous enough about nuclear power that if they didn't put a bond out there that was attractive to investors, they would never pay for that project. So also, that's the current...
Maybe that's the thing we do not need to talk about, the marketing part of it.
You know, Ms. Steele, she's our representative and she has to, I don't have to hold that line. I look at it from an investor's standpoint. He paid me a real economy, so that's what we're doing. Any other questions that might answer?
Talk to your mom.
Thank you, Roger. Appreciate it.
But not early. I've got a client. He's Tony Roosevelt. Hopefully, sell that.
All right, we have, how about you, Doug? Do you have anything else?
I have nothing to add.
Well, you ought to. You have Liberty Park down there to tell us about. It's ready for mural painting now, is it?
I don't know. It'll be at least a couple weeks with this moisture.
Yeah, I know, but the sign-me-up team at work is now done, correct?
Yeah, that was on your schedule 20 list.
You can really see they'll turn my marks on there, but that was in bad shape. We knew that. Anything else? Okay, does we have anyone in our audience that would speak to us here?
Too much.
You want to tell us anything else? You think you've done enough? All right, Lisa didn't forget you tonight. Motion for German, oh, wait a minute. Do you think we need to have another, have a work session for going over what we're going to be having to do with the Funding and Zoning Administration? Are you and I going to work this out, or what?
I would like to have some time to discuss with maybe somebody... I would like to have some time to discuss with maybe somebody that might be interested in this position, how to fill it, how to fund it, if it's going to be funded. There's issues that need to be addressed, and I don't have those answers yet.
Okay.
During the meantime, do we need to appoint a temporary zoning administrator?
There's nothing on the agenda. The last counting, the last Planning Commission meeting was just last Tuesday. The next scheduled Planning Commission meeting will be the twenty-seven, I believe. So we really don't need to have any sort of action until our next council meeting and get somebody appointed and get them in place. So I don't feel like it's just simply find somebody, tap them, and appoint them. That's not going to solve the problem.
No. My question is, though, if somebody comes in with a building project that needs action, we do not have anybody in this official capacity at this point. So that project has to officially sit until this council takes action to either appoint a temporary administrator or a permanent position that's filled.
It would be my opinion that the administrator, myself, would be able to put it on the agenda for Planning Commission regardless of whether or not you have an appointed position filled before that meeting.
I think you would too. Madam Mayor, I think we gave the city administrator a devil of a time thinking he had any authority at all, not to honor.
Well, now, he's bringing it to the Planning Commission.
There's no decision. Now, see, if you're asking, will the bill, if there is a decision that needs to be made that is wholly in the capacity of a zoning administrator and only the zoning administrator, that decision will be suspended until an administrator is appointed.
So if the project is described properly to us, somebody could bring in, instead of plans for approval, that is supposed to go to the zoning administrator prior to, and if there's nobody to look at those, to either give approval and move on to the building inspector, that project will have to sit until somebody is appointed, either temporarily...
The building inspector feels as though the scope of the project is outside of the current permissible areas, and it would need to go to the Planning Commission, and that can be placed on the agenda without any decision-making necessary of an appointed administrator's position, of the zoning administrator.
Not, well, we've had one acting.
Right.
We just haven't followed the procedure. That's beside the point. What you're almost saying is we don't have to have...
I don't think that's...
That's not the... There will be a recommended appointed position, person for that position within the next couple of weeks. Will the council getting together a work session expedite that in any way? I don't think so.
Well, I would agree with that. But there will have to be a discussion of what you just said. If you're going to recommend somebody, it has to be paid for this. We don't have that budget, if I understood correctly. This did not affect the current, the resigning administrators.
Yes. The job duties that were effectively removed from the utility supervisor's job description were, have not been, nor were they ever included with a pay increase or any other remuneration associated with taking on that responsibility. There is the contemplation, and one of the many juggling balls in the air, is in 2013, the Planning Commission or the planning line item does allow for four thousand or forty-nine hundred of professional services or additional assistance, labor charges, that we're inclined to be used if we get ourselves in a situation, even with a zoning administrator, to help him or her perform those duties correctly so that we don't let something fall through the cracks, so that we'd be bringing in some official assistance. The question I have is, would it be best for this, instead of trying to find somebody to dub them with the sword and say, "You're appointed," to add it to somebody else that's already an existing employee or add it to somebody who's just strictly going to volunteer, is it not something that we want to consider to be a reimbursed position at some level? And these are the thoughts and the ideas that I don't have yet.
Professional consultant, if you're tying the budget for Planning Commission, that four thousand dollars to be due, if it's somebody that doesn't have to be used on a daily basis, they're contracted, okay?
The intent would be is if I could find somebody that is not needing to be full-time employee, employed, not even being necessarily to be part-time employee, but only to be employed to address certain situations that can only be handled through the Planning and Zoning Commission so that we have some continuity of the issue through the process, and that person may or may not be paid through the Planning Commission line item based upon a set dollars per hour or some other arrangement, which I need to know who, what that position... We need to create basically a position that is strictly zoning administrator because backing it on to somebody's existing job duties has not been satisfactory. So it's a combination of a volunteer, paid on an as-needed basis. I don't know. I want to have some time to give you guys a couple of good options that is responsible to the budget, that will address the problems as they may come up, but still give you the opportunity to make an informed decision in two weeks, which still gives a week before the next Planning Commission meeting.
Very good. I think also going along with that, if we missed this one, I'd like city staff to also spend some time the next two weeks to get the list, get the council list of who should not be appointed.
Kat Serian, I was talking about a work session, maybe as to what?
Well, it should be a work session. How did we miss giving names to the mayor for appointed positions? Why isn't there a master list of appointed teams? We just found out that the zoning administrator is supposed to be appointed...
Of the positions that need to be appointed.
Of the positions that needed to be appointed.
We need to, yeah. And that's another one that I still am not thoroughly convinced that we have it in writing it's appointed.
But what, how is it, yeah, you said it was...
And again, I beg your understanding. I do not have these answers. That's specifically what the memo stated, was I don't have these answers yet. We want to adjust the job description so that it's more accurately reflecting his job duties.
That's fine. But I'm also, as a council member, saying, as city staff, either you're not helping the mayor, you're not helping us when we find out, oh, this is supposed to be appointed. Well, how many people do we have in the office that could be researching this and giving us this information? So now that it's up there...
From the League of Kansas Municipalities, there is a recommended list of appointed positions to each city. We have a listing of similar population-sized cities to make that recommendation to. We haven't had time to go back through the resolutions, ordinances adopted by this city, which tend to be different than what League of Municipalities have offered in the past. But we can have that, I'll commit to have that list to you on the...
It probably happens back there in the nineteen nineties when this particular, the zoning started.
And everything's speculation, people.
Yes, I know that that's probably...
And I know you want the list. And I mean, we'll figure it out, and we'll figure out if heads need to roll, heads will roll. But I don't have that. I understand what you're asking for. I just don't have it.
No. I'm just saying, together?
I'm trying my darkest.
Your administration will have it by Thursday, I promise.
Well, Doug, you're not the only one in the office. You're not the only one responsible.
I realize, but I also got notification of this on Wednesday morning of last week.
That's fine.
And I understand your concerns. I just, there's, it's difficult when you ask me questions that I've already acknowledged I don't have answers for.
Well, I think you did okay with your answers. I just wanted to give some direction that, well, now that this has come up, there's happened us in other things that...
I want you to be considering that Martin has a lot of knowledge there as to what he's had to handle and that he's had to wear so many hats and he couldn't, couldn't not do it as well as maybe he wanted to. And that should be very much considered within things, asked those questions as to what he found that complicated the things too. That, for sure. Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
I'm going to make a motion to Jeremy.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried by the zero.